All right, I think we're all here and ready to start. So can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I should have let you call the roll first, but we'll go ahead and do that backwards today, so.
No problem, sir. You're the boss. Dr. Phelps?
Present.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Reverend Mathias, present. Pastor Moody?
Present.
Dr. Randles?
Present.
Mr. Ross? Ms. Shokki?
Present.
I'm gonna start this again?
Ms. Slade?
Present.
Ms. Slade?
I'm here.
Better than Baker, I mean Baker?
Good one, that was good.
Here, here. It would be noted that the people that said that they were here did vote for the approval of the agenda, so. All right, celebrations.
Thank you, Dr. Baker and members of the board. I'd like to ask Kurt Johnson and the two athletic directors to come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You will enjoy your game changer t-shirt.
Really?
Provided, we think it's very apropos because you all are game changers.
That's right.
Had a chance to stop in on the TA Frost groundbreaking, very excited. It's a game changer. A lot of the things that you have led the way on doing will be changing the lives of many. We're here just to share with you some of the winter accomplishments in athletics, just very briefly there, as my colleagues have probably started the timer. So with no further ado, I want to turn it over to the high school A.D.s and they will share with you what's been going on.
Well, good evening, thank you for letting me be here today, Superintendent Weatherall Neal and President Baker and rest of our board members. I am very honored to be here to kind of give you a brief summary about the winter athletics at Union High School. This past winter season, we had a number of all-conference athletes in our sports. And we had two boys basketball players who made all-conference, two competitive cheer, young ladies who made all-conference, one bowler, and three swim athletes who all made all-conference this year. So Union this year, we had at least one all-conference in over 65% of the sports offered during the winter season, which is a tremendous feat this year, especially with us being a very tough division. And then not to mention, oh, excuse me, you also had two honorable mention athletes as well in girls' basketball and competitive cheer, so competitive cheer.
That's right. That's right.
Doing great, doing great. But another thing that I'm really proud of our students is the academic success they've been having. We have had a number of students who made the honor roll in our sports. Every sport that we offered this past winter, at least one student on that team in a varsity level made the honor roll. So we had two wrestlers, two hockey players, a girls' basketball player, competitive cheer, bowling and basketball, all represented at their respective schools on the honor roll. So I'm very proud as athletic director to have those young men and women doing a great job in the classroom and in competition.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here today. Thank you Superintendent Neal, Weatherall Neal, Board President, Mr. Baker, and the rest of the distinguished board members. I'm gonna talk about a little bit of some of the Ottawa Hills sports accomplishments this winter season. We did have a successful season. As you can see, we got some of our athletes here with us today. The Ottawa Hills winter season consisted of seven all-conference athletes in swimming and boys' basketball as well. We had an honorable mention girls' basketball player and also honorable mention competitive cheer. Also, some of the accomplishments for the basketball program. As I said, three all-conference for OK Gold. Finished second place in OK Gold this year after winning it last year. Also made it to the district championship game this year. We had a second-team all-area dream team athlete on the basketball team. One of our athletes that's here with us today, Marcus Smalley, received a full-ride academic scholarship to Western Michigan University. Anthony Alexandra, who is not with us at the moment, also received a full-ride academic scholarship to the University of Michigan and also was selected the 2015-16 Dan Namath Boys Basketball Scholarship Award winner as voted by the West Michigan Officials Association. And the only reason Anthony Alexandra is not with us here today because he's accepting another scholarship award from the U of M alumni right now at Thousand Oaks Country Club. So also the JB basketball team went undefeated this past season at 18-0, so they had a successful season. Boys swim, we had 17 swimmers on the team, 10 are freshmen in Southmore, so we got a lot of them coming back. Doo meet, again, we had another winning record this season, going 5-3. Two all-conference, two conference champions Dawson Erickson in the 500 free as well as A.J. Oliver for the 100 breaststroke. We had four all-conference athletes, two regional diving qualifiers, two Division II state qualifiers, and we had one top 16 finish in our state championship competition as well. And also, we have records that continue to fall, it seems like, each year in swimming. Another one this year with Dawson Erickson breaking the 500 free record that stood since 1999. He broke that by five seconds. And also Dawson Erickson was in the advanced second-team all-area swim team as well. And also I want to thank our two coaches who were here with us right now, Coach Van Mayfield, basketball coach, and also Coach Eve Julian, who continues to do a tremendous job with all of our programs. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Nice.
Would like to shake your hands.
We would love it, thank you.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, buddy.
Congratulations, buddy. Good for you. You.
Thank you.
And you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Next, we have the report of student representative, Abigail.
All right, I'll start with the empowerment forum that happened last week. It was a huge success. And one of the two main things that I really think is awesome from it is we've got two girls from GRPS who were able to interview with Wood TV8 about their own experiences. And then also, Dariana Peoples from Union High School has been given the chance to interview with KSD. So that is fantastic. And then City, how we started our IV testing this week, which is not as fun, but I've seen actually a lot more drive in the students this year than there haven't been, than there have been in past years, like to actually receive the diploma. So that's like a huge step forward for us. And then also, Henry Atkins won the state forensics tournament this past weekend. And then a senior who will be attending Innovation Central next year, Raymond Lee, won a $1,000 scholarship for an essay he wrote on motivation and aspirations. And that's going to a scholarship fund, so yeah, those are my updates for the week.
Very nice.
Could you elaborate on the empowerment forum that you referred to?
The Lake's Courage Action Forum. We had Shiza Shaheed as our keynote speaker. She's the CEO of the Malala Fund. We had about 3,000 girls attending, like a bunch of them were from GRPS. It was a huge impact, like we had so many girls that were just really impressed by it and motivated by it and inspired by all that Shiza had done. She had attended Stanford University after living in Pakistan, and she had come and helped Malala, and she was just super inspirational.
Yeah, and Superintendent Neal helped a lot to make that possible. So it was really quite an event. Says a lot to do, you know, the rest of us to do with our summer vacation. So I mean, the story, if you don't know what I'm referring to, is basically started a worldwide movement out with the summer internship, so. Anyway. Public comment, board agenda items, do you have any?
I don't have any.
And it looks like no one is stepping forward. Secretary's report.
All right. We do have the 2016 citywide art show. Grand Rapids Public Schools presents the 2016 citywide art show, May 5th through the 20th, at the Western Michigan University Conference Center located at 200 Ionia Southwest. Over 1,500 pieces of art will be featured, representing every school and grade level. Gallery hours are Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Open houses are scheduled May 10th from 5:30 to 7:30 for GRPS K through 5th and then K through 8th grade, and then May 11th from 5:30 to 7:30 for GRPS secondary schools and all non-public schools as well. So if we can please support our bedding artists and do that, that would be great. Also, we had the Challenge Scholar induction ceremony. What a treat that was to see these young people. I think over 500 families were present from Harrison and Westwood. And so it was just exciting to see staff and families excited, students really pumped about what that means for them and their future. So that was, that was very exciting. I know a lot of parents are getting ready for graduations and the like. So that's all buzzing, I'm sure, in a lot of our, a lot of our heads right now as well. That's all I have.
So good.
Segue. Dr. Baker and members of the board, I would like to ask Mary Jo Coleman to come forward to share some of the updates on our Challenge Scholars program.
Good evening, President Baker, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, and members of the board. And I am going to build on what Reverend Mathias was talking about with Challenge Scholars. Last week, there was an exciting announcement about a new and expanded Challenge Scholars program. And it really will provide additional access for all of our students entering the 9th grade at Union High School. So it's very exciting. It also creates a much tighter alignment between GRPS and GRCC. Because the expansion is that any 9th grader who enters Union High School in the fall of 2016 can qualify for a free tuition-based two-year college program at Grand Rapids Community College. And that includes their career programs at IM Tech. So it offers an incredible opportunity for our students. The students do need to maintain a 2.0, graduate from Union High School. They need to remain there all four years, and they also have to have no expulsions of 180 days. So that is just a wonderful opportunity. And then in addition to that, any student who goes through the 6th grade program starting in the fall of 2016 at Westwood and/or Harrison, they qualify for the two-year community college tuition-free grant. And if they maintain their grades, they can move on to a four-year college tuition-free. So again, what a wonderful opportunity. The program remains the same for our current 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, in which they qualify for a four-year or a two-year as long as they maintain a 2.5, have expulsion-free record of 180 days, and they have a 95% attendance. So those are very exciting programs that we wanted to share with you. In addition to that, our program with CC, we have been working with the team there. They have been phenomenal. In part, we say we're going back to our roots. Some of you might remember when CC and Grand Rapids Public Schools, one system. Well, we are trying to make a seamless process for kids to go right from Grand Rapids Public Schools and just think it is automatic, I need to go on to a community college. And again, it's for the IM Tech or the college itself. So it's been fun planning that out. They are already going to begin coming to the 8th graders here in our system, starting in May. They will be meeting with 8th graders at, at all the feeder parent schools, so. They're ready to roll up their sleeves. I also want to thank the Grand Rapids Community Foundation for learning with us and expanding this program. I also want to thank the community college for stepping in. And I would also thank our people who, the Grand Rapids Public Schools staff who are on the front line, who make this happen every day for kids. They work hard and tirelessly, so.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our action items. And can I get a motion to approve Policy 5202?
So moved.
Support.
This is again just our final reading. We read and discussed this once before, so. Any discussion? We will see.
Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shokki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
All right, next, before we have a motion to support this item, can we have Rhonda come up to discuss it?
I actually see Larry O. here, and Rhonda is pointing to the other side, so I'll ask Larry O. to come up. Rhonda's like, "Thank you, Larry."
We can do a duet.
Right. Just kidding. Larry, if you could just tell the board and for the public a little bit about what we're doing here with the ISD.
ISD. Annually, the ISD is required to have their general fund budget approved by all members of ISD, which obviously includes GRPS. I believe included in your materials are all the budgets of the ISD, the general budget, special education fund budget, and the CTE fund budget. We are only required to approve the general fund budget. The general fund budget of ISD primarily funds the preschool programs, GRSP. Interestingly, because of the size of our GRSP program, we do it direct. We don't get the dollars from them. But the rest of the district within the ISD receive funding for their preschool programs from the ISD as well as transportation and support services. So we have reviewed the, I've reviewed the general fund budget, and it's appropriate as far as I'm concerned. One good thing is, is as property tax values have gone up within the county, more tax dollars are going into the ISD to fund programs like the GRSP. So the Finance Committee, we discussed at the meeting last Monday, they approved it, and I would recommend that this board also approve the general fund budget for the ISD for 2016-17.
For approval. Board.
Any other comment, anybody else from the Finance Committee wanna? Again? All right.
Okay, ready? Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shokki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
All right, and it looks like since Larry hasn't gone away, we'll go ahead and ask him about the next item, too.
I will, that's why I stayed put here. The next item there, the Wallace Foundation Grant, again, there's a little memo there from Walter DeBoer. "We'd like the board's approval to pursue a grant application for a $400,000 one-year planning grant. This would be in concert with the City of Grand Rapids. We want to file an application for the $400,000 planning grant, and then based on that planning grant, we may have an opportunity to apply for additional dollars to fund programs to develop social or emotional learning in school and out-of-school settings." So as you are aware, that is one of our strategic initiatives in this district is to develop programs to address those needs of our students. So this would be a grant for the one-year planning, and then based on that, potentially we can apply for additional dollars, which could be several million dollars over several years. So that is the nature of the Wallace Foundation Grant.
The one piece I'd like to add is that they, the Wallace Foundation, asked us, the City of Grand Rapids and Grand Rapids Public Schools, to apply. And so I think that speaks volumes to the work that we've done with our city's children.
Yeah, and it's part of the joint office of our community's children, so. So I think that maybe some don't even, I mean, so anyway, it's a great collaboration, so.
Is this the exact cost or is it an estimated cost? According to your letter, it says it's an estimated.
The estimated amount of the grant, yeah.
It's the grant that's coming to that office, yeah. All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shokki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion for the consent agenda grouping?
So moved.
Board. Okay. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shokki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Does the agenda approve?
All right, moving to discussion items. There's two issues we need to discuss. One is, we discussed this last time, the NSBA Advocacy Institute in Washington, D.C., June 12th to 14th. Has there been anyone decided that they'd like to go? I know, I think that.
I'm thinking about it.
Thinking about it? Anybody else thinking about it?
They're all probably on vacation in June.
Some of us work for a living.
I used to do that, I used to do that.
Julie, do you have a date that we need to let you know by?
Soon as possible.
So by Wednesday or Friday? Wednesday's fine, Friday's not?
We just want to secure hotels for you guys.
Okay, so by Wednesday, we need to know if you're going to D.C. All right. Next, board retreat dates. So we are struggling. If you guys go, if you have your packets open, the last page of the packet is the, they, and if you, if you see, there's only, we don't really need all of this whole table on here because there's only one day that's not filled with a lot of red. I, I'd like to, so this means July 21, and this would be a solution, that we do our retreat on that day. We would be, there's three agenda items that we're looking at, some sort of a, another board refresher, board member refresher course, a review of the demographic makeup of the district, of the racial diversity and international diversity of the district, and goal-setting for the year. Now, the problem with goal-setting for the year is that we are trying to move to having that happen much earlier in the year rather than after the plans for the year have already been established. And so basically, that will be the case if we have this in July. I'd like to, I'd like to see if it's possible to propose an alternative to having a July 21 date. And that would be to have long work sessions over the next three months and have three work sessions, so the May, June, and July work session, we would do just extended work sessions and not set aside a whole day for it. And so I just want to see how people respond to that as an option. Now, that does mean that we need to make sure that we're there on those work sessions, but it does not mean that we need to set aside a whole day for that. So our next, theoretically, our next work session, our next work session is next Monday. I'd have to talk to the superintendent about what we can pull off in terms of that agenda by next Monday, but we could also do June, July, August. But anyway, just wanted to see what your thoughts are, or if people think that we should just set aside the 21st and just go for it. I'm good with that.
Two things.
Dr. Randles, yes.
Mr. Ross, even though he is very compelling, is on this list twice, and I am not on the list. And I do believe I would have had no on the 21st because it's Thursday. So that would have been a problem if that's only, and I like the solution that you're proposing, Dr. Baker, that we have the work sessions more robust and then work through these issues to start setting the agenda, et cetera. It makes sense to do that, and if we can do that, I'm fine with that.
Well, it is important that we make sure Reynard can make it, so.
I know.
At least we know Reynard can be there. The rest of us. So you're not available on the 21st?
No, I mean, I have to, right, I don't have a vacation day, and it's.
Children would be sick that day, okay.
Are you proposing the work sessions on the off-board days or before a board meeting?
No, the Tuesday, we would just extend the Tuesday, I mean, the second Monday work session.
So that's May 9th, June 13th, and July 11th.
Okay, got it.
That's what I was gonna say.
Got it, I am gone on the 13th of June.
She was gonna miss half the day on the 21st anyway, so.
We can cover the part that we would have missed that half-day anyways, so. How does that, how does?
But we have, we do have five Wednesdays in May, for instance, like the 23rd and the.
Well, the last one would be Memorial Day.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we're gonna skip Memorial Day.
Nope, we're not gonna do that.
So Dr. Baker, are you requesting that the times for the retreat to start at 11:30?
No, he said.
But is that time for?
Well, that's when Wendy would get here, but it's, the rest of us would start earlier in the day, so.
I thought, I thought whatever Wendy, I thought whatever Wendy wants, she gets, you know.
I explained myself.
There are other responsibilities.
But we can't, we really have to take the July 21st off because Monica can't make it, so. So really, basically, we don't have a date.
I think the work session idea works for me.
That works for me.
How long, how long are the work sessions?
Just know that I'm gone on the 13th, but, well.
Well. Typically, the other thing is, is that we wouldn't necessarily have much work sessions typically in the summer because it would be a time for less work to be done. So we could probably do, I mean, if we would have a work session on July 21, we'd probably have a six-to-seven hour work session. So if we split it into three sessions, we could do a couple, a couple-hour sessions each time. And, you know, that way we could, I think that we could schedule the, like the board refresher course. Maybe I would try to do that on, perhaps.
I think that works.
You can do that board refresher the day.
Right, on the 13th.
Yeah.
Would it afford?
Well, at least we need more than two hours, so.
Would it afford the same level of bonding, Dr. Baker? I'm joking.
So, and then July, okay, so let's try to do that. I will have to work with the superintendent to figure out schedule if. So let's shoot for May, June, and July. Again, I'm not sure what we can pull off between now and next Monday for a retreat topic, and especially since it'll involve her staff, then I may.
Is there any way we can do the work sessions earlier in the day instead of late?
Then it gets more complicated.
Everybody's getting.
Someone was working for them in the past.
If you did the refresher in June, I probably don't need a refresher.
That was, that was Reynard's point, but. All right, we are gonna try to go with this, and I'll, you'll get a communication later in the week for our agenda for this coming Monday, so.
So just so that we're clear, we're looking at May 9th, June 13th, and July 11th.
Yes.
All right.
Oh, July 11th is my anniversary. It's my 30th wedding anniversary.
Oh, wow.
Try to see your husband that day.
Okay. All right, so we got that set. Public comment for any agenda, not agenda items? Okay. Superintendent's comments.
Dr. Baker and members of the board, it is really hard to imagine that this is our fifth year closing down schools. And this week, Thursday, we will hold our annual senior celebration day. And so we're really excited to bring all of our seniors together.
Be careful with the phrase "closing down schools." It's like, wait a second.
That's what we consider, closing the year out.
Closing the year out, okay.
And so we will bring our, yeah, so we'll bring all of our seniors together from the entire district. And it's always a nice time, a fun time, to let the students spend the entire year together, so.
All right, board member comments. I'm gonna start with Ms. Shokki and work our way.
Um, well, she's not here, but I guess I will appoint a little feel-good, the young woman that was here from the competitive cheer team, just outstanding GRPS family. Oldest brother just graduated from Michigan in engineering this past Saturday. Second oldest brother said to graduate next year from Michigan State. The third is graduating this year from City and has a scholarship to University of Michigan as well, and obviously is pulling up the rear, but just another good story about a great GRPS.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you for sharing that. That's great.
Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of excitement in the community in terms of graduations and moving forward and students doing better, so that's exciting to hear.
Dr. Phelps?
I just was very pleased to be at Covell today. That was just a wonderful, to see that, that school come back and be bigger and better is just wonderful, so, that's good.